Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
Stand for the pledge, take your, remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot to remind you to either turn your cell phones down or shut them off, please. This is our appointment meeting, but I want to get Carla up here first and we're gonna take care of-
It's up to you.
Yep, you can come on and we'll get that taken care of.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
You have a full house tonight. Okay, I am back with the cyber liability quote. The renewal is February the 9th. And when I was here in December, we didn't have the quote yet, so... Okay, here's an extra. So, I think we have good news. I was pleasantly surprised, last year, the board increased the liability limit from $500,000 to $1 million. So, our quote here is for the million, exactly like last year. There are some sub-limits with different coverages that are lower limits built into the policy. So, when you look at this document, there's a lot of information in that packet on all the coverages. The very back page has the renewal premium. Tried to make it a little easier so you don't have to flip through all the pages. Last year's premium was $10,070.63. The renewal premium is coming in at $10,326.88. So, it's a little over a $256 a year increase if we leave all the coverages like they were last year. We could explore going back to the lower limits if that's something you want to consider. I was looking at that earlier. I think it was a couple thousand dollars, but... The half a million last year was $8,635. So, what is that, about $1,400, $1,500 more for the million limit? Versus the $500,000 limit.
So, it's each and every claim, the 1 million coverage?
Well, there's a lot of sections to this cyber, okay? But yeah, most of the limits are the million, each and every claim.
So, as you- We get into the ransomware situation, how does this cover us?
I think the ransomware is up to the million limit.
Okay.
Let's look at that.
What's that? Cyber incident response, cyber crime, what would that-
I am not an IT person, I qualify myself with that. Extortion-
That sounds like ransomware.
Yes, one, two, three, four. Fifth page back, about midway down the page, unfortunately, they didn't put page numbers on this. About halfway down, Section D extortion, limit of liability, each and every claim, a million with a $5,000 deductible.
Okay.
You know, you could certainly have your IT expert review this for the coverages. There's a lot of sections to it, different-
Well, I guess one question I would have, what's the most common type of cyber issues happening?
Well, I would assume-
You hear about the ransomware all the time.
Right.
That's why I asked that question.
You know, we never-
I don't know.
Had a claim. Had one client that had a claim but did not have cyber coverage. And that involved their computers getting hacked and private information getting taken from those computers.
Is that a crime? That's not a crime probably, cyber data breach or something.
Yes.
Okay, well, we definitely need it, I'm happy the price didn't cost anything up much.
There's some literature included in this proposal next to the last pages. It gives some claims data, claims scenarios for you, Park, fun reading.
Uh-huh, sure. Well, I-
I'll make a motion, we stay with the million.
Yeah, I'm in favor, yeah, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Okay, we will renew it as it is. I will, I can't get a signature on an application till after January 9th, so Brandy signed it last year. Can she sign it this year for us?
I'll move for that.
After the, after January 9th.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Alright, well, we'll move on to our organizational part of the meeting. I guess first thing we'll do is start electing officers.
Yep, need some of those.
Yep, first up-
Sorry?
I said first up is President.
Well, I've just been so happy with you taking that position, David. I nominate David Brown.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move to the Vice President.
Who is the Vice now? It's you.
Melissa.
Yeah, you've been so good with it. I nominate Melissa for Vice.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Town Attorney, you guys wanna-
Well, he's not here, so we'll throw him under there or in there.
I'll nominate Nick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I have to, it's not very good, is it? That's why I need my new sheet.
What do you need?
I laid a sheet down and I can't locate it, unfortunately.
Well, the next one's the Town Administrator, I mean, I could pass.
Yeah, I had all the, I had everything listed on paper.
Is it on the copier?
No, I looked over there, but it's got some blue ink on it, if somebody has it, with some red ink on the bottom. I don't think so, I, I, we can, I'll make it.
It's been somewhere.
I'll make it work, but-
Well, you're current-
For Town Administrators?
Yeah, Town Administrator, Brandy is who we've been utilizing since we made that change last spring.
Right.
So, I'll nominate Brandy, continue on, been quite happy with her administrative skills.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna see if you could do Doug's.
Well, yeah, I received a tenure at town, you know, he took that role on last spring.
I second.
I nominate him for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief of Police?
Well-
I'll nominate Bill, continuing that role.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fire Chief?
Make a recommendation, we keep Jim Beach.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Building Commissioner?
That's Josh, isn't it?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The West Central Solid Waste District, Park and Chris.
I think they should remain in those roles. They do a fabulous job.
That'd be great, I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
I'll second.
I guess we needed a second on that, didn't we?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
The Empa Board, I believe Keith wants to stay on that, so-
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? The-
We need a new appointment for that.
Do you have?
I do, I do not have anyone.
For which?
Emergency Management.
Emergency Management.
We just have one appointment to be made there.
I thought I was doing that, isn't that the thing with LEPC?
You are down on hazard mitigation, is what I had you on, and that was currently a role that Jeff was-
Well, it seems like that's-
Partying on the emergency management, it was just an appointment that you made at the time.
Does it, I mean, is that for LEPC? I've been going to those meetings.
Unless, if it's any different from hazard mitigation planning-
Well, let's just nominate her for it and see what happens.
I'll wait to get an email.
You want me to put your name down?
Pending finding out what the heck it is.
Okay, so I nominate-
Second.
All in favor?
What's my prize?
Okay, Cemetery Board, we still have Park, Carla, and I believe Kevin is on that. Or, Carla, you're off of that, aren't you?
No.
No, she's still on.
No, we're not on there.
No, I just had a-
You have to bring your replies-
Anger is there, I guess.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Police Commission, we do have three seats open, I'm assuming everybody wants to stay. So, it'd be Kevin, Liddy, and John. So, if I can get a-
I move.
Second.
All in favor? We did have one resignation off the Safety Board. Tim Coleman would like to fill that slot, so-
I'll make a motion.
I'll count one of those as a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
I had Sandy Beamas down on that board, too.
She is, I don't think she's up this year, is she?
I, well, I think she was, but she wanted to remain the same, so I, yeah, I mentioned her name, but I don't think you heard me back there, Carla, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
So, yeah, I'll need the four of those, please, and I will get you the information that you need tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, we are at the Park Board. Leanne Rubek wants to resign from that position, so-
I think Kevin would be great.
Okay, well, how many openings do we have?
We've got, as of right now, we have one, correct? I mean, are you-
You have, I mean, what I was, well, go back to me, Leanne officially was resigning as far as her seat goes. There were two other potential, if you have seats, unless you want to- Are you good, or?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I mean, you're good and you're good, right? So, and I didn't get an answer back from, well, I didn't get an answer back from one, and the other one was if there's somebody that would like to fill that seat, they were willing to step away.
So, we have one that resigned, and we have one that would-
Cam, what about Cam?
If somebody would like to replace her, she's okay with that.
Okay, so we have you two are good.
And then we have Alicia, and she, I did not hear back from her.
I thought she said somewhere, she said she would stay on, but I didn't see it.
She didn't reply back to me, but I don't know.
I don't remember if it was a text.
I don't recall, but she may, perhaps she did.
You're on a board, you moved from town, you have to resign, you're spot on board at the time you moved?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did she move?
No, I'm, it's just a general question.
Yeah.
So, how many does that leave us? We potentially have, we know we have one.
We have one for sure resignation, and possibly one more that would like, if you have someone to fill that, they're okay with it.
Okay.
So, you have, you have two, essentially. Possibly a third if there's interest, but if Alicia-
Do, how many interested people do we have?
For the Park Board?
She needs her piece of paper.
Well, I'm assuming we got one here in the room, just by the, yeah, I'm assuming that.
Ready on the bottom.
Who else do we have?
At least three people.
And then Kevin, it'd be good.
Well, Kevin'd be good at anything, but he's, he's pretty busy the way it is. Who's this young man sitting back there in the blue shirt? Yeah.
Charlie Goggan, bucked by Brandy.
Okay, well, what, you want to serve on something, Charlie?
Well, I'm here to help wherever I can.
Okay, okay.
Charlie had reached back out to me, as well as Luke Waltz is here. I had kind of put that out there, it actually got kind of an overwhelming response of people that were interested. I had since then invited them to come to the meeting to introduce themselves to you, so that, that's an official, you know, since it is an appointment, so they're here on their behalf of interest in particular boards. So, if you want to hear from them at all, or if you just want to know who's in attendance or who's interested, I do have a few other people that were interested in particular boards, a matter of how many seats you have open and want to fill.
Okay, well-
So, Luke, do you want to speak?
Yeah, my name's Luke Waltz, you guys all know me, I think I've caused problems and been helpful over time to the town, so I've been on both sides of the fence, but I, my plan from 2014 is still on that wall for the Park Board, and there's a lot of things that I want to, want to improve and want to leave a legacy for the town and my family. My kids are in this town, I brought them back, I care about this place, so from the pool to the playground, to all the amenities that we could have, I want to be involved, so I've worked on millions of dollars of park projects across the state, and think it'd be good to give back a little bit here. So, that's me.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else that? Do you want to, Charlie, you want to speak?
Yeah, you want me to introduce myself?
Sure.
Charlie Goggan, I live over on the north end of the high school football field, the only house on Fawn Drive. Born in Terre Haute, retired to Rockville in 2018. Wife Penny, I have a grandson at Park Partridge High School, one at the middle school, and a granddaughter at the elementary school. Retired and worked part-time for my previous employer doing online interviews, but my career was in 50 years of construction dedicated to healthcare, hospitals, surgery centers, and such.
Well, who do you work for, Charlie?
I, I work for Layton Construction out of Utah.
I'll be darned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, back to the Park Board, we have-
Well, it sounds like we had at least two openings, perhaps three. I'm starting to figure out how many spots we got.
At least two.
I'd be interested if you want to throw me on it.
You will?
I said I'd be interested if you want to throw me on it.
Okay.
Well, you're getting brave now, volunteering for-
I might as well step up one year at a time. That's all you're gonna give me for it.
Well, I, you know, I have to respect the skill that Luke has, and you know, gosh, I get a kick out of looking at his master plan over there from 2014, it's, it's, well, I wouldn't call a master plan, what do you call that? It's basically a-
It's, yeah, I would say it's a master plan.
A visual version of a master plan, without all the verbiage.
That's right.
You know, it's, it's something that, it's hard to know where to go if you don't have a something in writing, I guess. Anyway, yeah, I would nominate Luke for one of the positions on the Park Board.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hold on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Opposed?
I don't have anything from Alicia.
I don't either.
Well, I nominate this young fellow over here, Chris, to Park Board.
Can I get a second on Chris?
Oh, we're doing Chris, too?
Yeah, we're doing the second.
Okay.
So, um-
I, I, I think, yeah, I nominate Chris.
Can I get a second?
I thought I did.
She did.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're gonna do a third one?
It sounds like Kim.
I mean, it's up to you guys, essentially, if you-
Well, from-
I just was trying to be respectful to, throw that out there, to ask if, I don't want anybody to be pressured to be on a board if they're not interested in serving.
Right, well, based on the information you shared just a little bit earlier, sounds like I have three positions. I mean, Charlie, you want to be on the Park Board?
I nominated Kevin, but he's welcome to be on.
Kevin has a lot going on already.
Can he not speak for himself?
He's constructed what?
I'll spin the wheel down later in the game.
He'll spin the wheel later in the game, that's a good way to respond. So, Charlie, are you interested? Are you interested for the Park Board?
Whatever you need.
Okay.
And just to keep in mind open, and I didn't, I don't know if we actually spoke about that, Charlie, through email or contact, but if I didn't tell you both, there was potential Park Board openings, as well as our planning and zoning, our Board of Zoning Appeals, basically. I do have one, maybe two openings on that, so if that's a particular interest of yours, you know, I wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure of what the responsibilities are for either position, so I, whatever you guys think is appropriate.
I just wanted to throw that out there, that, because I wasn't really sure which year you were going, so-
Well, planning does sound interesting, but there again, I don't know what the responsibilities are.
Okay.
We haven't met in probably the last three years.
We also have Ross Akers that's interested in the Park Board.
We haven't met in about three years, so it's pretty minimal.
I know, why did I know that?
Well, okay, there's, so some young man named Ross Akers apparently has some interest in the Park Board.
Oh, he does, Ross does?
You know Ross?
Yeah. Oh, I'll nominate Ross.
You don't, does he live in town?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Did they move to town?
He lives at his grandma's house right out here in Old Court.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Uh, well, Charlie, it sounds like there's another young man wants to be in the Park Board, given your background, what else is open?
Maybe zoning.
Well, the zoning, and if that's something that you may have interest in, I know, I understand if you don't know particular all the ins and outs, but I'd be happy to get you up to speed on what that entails, if you are interested in that.
Whatever you need.
Okay.
So, you nominate Ross, I'll second Ross.
Do we have a second on that?
I do.
All in favor?
He's worked for DNR.
He has? Oh, good. Go back on it, okay.
So, I think we've got that squared away for the moment.
All in favor on Ross?
Aye. So, what's the Planning Commission?
Well, the Planning Commission has evolved to be essentially the same members of the BZA.
BZA and planning, same member?
Except for me, I'm on planning, but I can't be on zoning.
Right, but I don't believe there's really been any specific planning issues or meetings, so it's been really geared toward the BZA.
So, is there any change needed?
If you want to, would you like to stay on the planning as far as that goes?
Sure, there are no meetings involved also.
Okay, I would think that you were saying then, if there's a change in the BZA, we would just move those particular people into that planning as well.
Is Jeff gonna stay on that, just the BZA, he's one off of?
Well, you've got two, if you are interested there.
Okay, that's fine with me, so, um, is Matt, Matt's one off the-
Off of what?
Off planning?
Well, BZA, so yes.
Oh, he's one off BZA.
They're, this particular work hand in hand, so this here is gonna follow the same suit as this.
Was he on both?
So, who?
Yes.
So, basically, those two boards are gonna be identical.
Yes, with an addition of Liddy on planning.
Okay, well, also, it sounds like-
I'm up to speed now.
Sounds like we have an opening on the Planning Commission, on the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Same person, two different boards, they don't meet, but-
Well, that's a new basis.
Once a quarter.
I'll make a motion, we put Mr. Goggan on there.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Is he squirrel?
He's squirrel. He can hardly wait.
Okay, okay.
Do you want a little bit about, do you have any?
No, that's fine. Tom Stanball would also entertain the BZA planning.
Do we have another opening?
Yes, we have two openings.
Possibly now, too, but I'm just now-
Okay, well, I nominate Tom Stanball.
Okay.
Chris, speak me to it.
Can I get a second?
Chris.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Who's up on the storm, anybody?
You all just said you wanted to stay because you love it.
Well, yeah.
Except for seven o'clock meeting.
Seven o'clock meeting, yeah.
You guys are all good.
Uh, yeah.
They're all good.
Okay, Indiana, alcohol and tobacco.
I'll nominate-
Doug's on it.
Yeah, Doug's staying.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If he wants to stay on the next one. The next one.
The Thrive?
Thrive, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug and Melissa?
I'll recommend they remain in their position.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, back to storm water, we didn't need to make any motion on that, well-
Well, let's go ahead with Steve Waltz, Kevin Callens, Parks Wayne, for the Storm Water Board, please, yeah.
Yeah.
Or somebody else.
Make a motion.
Got it.
All in favor? Um, the CVC.
Convention and visitors, who's on there now?
Doug. Well, he's in county.
Him and John Benelmo.
Kim and John.
Did they both want to stay on?
Kim, oh, Kim Cooper.
I don't know if anybody's interested, I mean-
Fascinating thing, I just don't have time. Think I worked the night same week.
They don't Mondays, too, don't they? Or they used to?
I don't know, it depends on, well, let's say-
Are they wanting to give them up, or?
So, we have two openings?
No, not necessarily.
No, I don't know.
Oh. Okay.
Well, leave it as is, and then if one of them decides that they want to change their line, then we can, I'll bring that to the board's attention.
So, can I get a-
Make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Park County Redevelopment, that's Park and I are on that board.
I'll make a motion.
To change it?
Leave. Do you want it?
He jumped in, never mind.
It is actually an interesting board.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, zone, or BZA, we've already taken care of, basically, or do you want to make a motion on it, too?
Yeah, let's go ahead, just because it's separate, so-
I'll make a motion.
Paula Ronnie, Charlie, and Mr. Beach. So, leave, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Will Tom also be on that?
Yeah.
Um, yes, he will move into that spot, sorry.
Okay.
Aye, everybody aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Melissa, are you interested in staying in the Main Street Legion, or?
That's fine, I don't care.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
This is-
And then, Liddy, you're on the Hazard Migration Planning.
Mitigation.
You would like to stay on that.
Sure, I don't really know what that is either, so.
That was something that mitigated hazards.
Is there a motion made?
I'll move, I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We have a Partnership Park County.
On my paper, I floated around here, it says Partnership Park County.
Yeah, apparently, there's an opening on Partnership Park County, and David has expressed interest in going to that board, and I would nominate David to go to that.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I think they'd be about seven in the morning, don't they, or something?
Yeah. The third Wednesday of the month, seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay, that was fun.
I think that takes care of our new appointments, I appreciate everybody that wants to be on a board, and-
And welcome, Charlie, yeah, new face.
It's definitely a tireless job.
Would it be much trouble if you guys introduced yourselves, nothing I remember?
Oh, sure.
I'm Dave Brown, I'm Board President.
Melissa Buehl, the Board Vice President.
Chris McCann.
Lydie Wright.
Doug Gordon, utilities assistant.
Yeah, I'm Park Swing.
I met you.
Yeah, well, you look familiar, where did we meet at?
Um, I live right across from Dave Nolan, you came out and looked at that ditch.
Oh, yeah, 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 a couple of years ago, yeah.
That's what I thought you'd been here.
Yeah, okay, good to see you again.
And thank you, Charlie, for coming.
Oh, you're welcome.
And thank you, Louis, for coming, and everybody else that's here.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the payroll schedule. Are we ready for that?
Yeah.
So you have twenty-six payrolls, looks like.
Is that on that paper too?
No.
We can take a break if you want.
I'm scribbling on it, but here's what you sent out.
Can we go?
Did you change anything?
I got it, it was just out of the scene.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I've sent the payroll ordinance out multiple times.
Are we doing payroll orders, payroll schedule?
Oh, the schedule is, sorry, Dave, you're in. So I sent those out, I have reviewed those, um, we've got our town council meeting schedule still set for the first and third Mondays at five o'clock here, unless you wanna make any changes to that. Um, with the exception of, of course, tonight's organizational meeting, um, the next meeting in January will be January fifteenth, which will still be the second, or the third Monday, that is a holiday, we still will be meeting at five o'clock.
But it's also.
And that meeting will be held at the Elks on Strawberry Road in conjunction with our police and fire appreciation award ceremony. So the meeting will be held out there at that location, that will be the only meeting at that location. And then, um, I think the only other holiday was a, a Tuesday Labor Day, um, or Monday Labor Day in September, that we would move the meeting to Tuesday, but all other meetings will be first and third Mondays at five, if that's what you guys wanna decide.
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule.
All in favor?
Aye.
We haven't signed that one, please. Um, I did send a payroll schedule out, um, basically, it's the every other Friday, um, still going on a bi-weekly basis.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and then we do have our holiday schedule as well, and it basically is just a mirror of the state holiday schedule that we've continued to follow. This year will be an election year for us, so there will be two additional holidays, um, listed on that schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we go to Vella or somebody else?
You will.
Can you go, can you stick me, please? Go to Vella.
Take it, you're just not here.
You just skip over me?
Oh, okay. Bill, are you ready?
Yeah. Okay. So we had twenty-two criminal investigations in December as compared to twenty-six in twenty twenty-two. Bowled a year of three hundred and twenty-one at the close of December. Twenty-two, we were at four hundred and twenty-eight. Now, our computer assisted dispatch was down, so these numbers may not be completely accurate, as we weren't really able to track them like we normally are when the system is up. A hundred and fifty-four, uh, have been violent or potentially violent in nature, and thirteen of those were in December. Collectively responded to two hundred and nineteen calls for service, five traffic crashes, two vehicles towed. According to ECWS, our E ticket system, thirty entries in December, two felonies, six misdemeanors, six infractions, three ornaments, eighteen warnings. In December twenty twenty-two, there were five hundred and four calls with twenty-six crashes, four, or twenty-six cases, four crashes, uh, zero impounded, forty-one entries in the ECWS. Felonies were one, misdemeanors twelve, infractions eleven, warnings forty-four, and arrests with nine. Assistant Chief Redmond and myself will be going to breast test, uh, school this month, as well as, uh, Assistant Chief Redmond will also be going to firearms instructor school this month. Uh, Sergeant Martin will be going to public information off the boot camp, uh, this month. We have received our new backup weapons, which were purchased by the prosecutor, and we are waiting on the arrival of the duty grants purchased by the prosecutor. I'd also like to ask for permission to apply for a community foundation grant, uh, so that we can get some criminal investigation equipment.
Show moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, if the board would like, I've only got one applicant, I can interview, uh, sometime this week when they're available, a crossing guard, and if they pass the crossing third interview, uh, I don't know if you want to wait till the fifteenth, or if you just wanna to, if with my approval, hire them.
Now, is this the one for Howard Avenue?
No, this is the one for thirty-sixth.
Okay, 'cause I thought we had that one filled on Howard, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We're fine with letting Vella use his treasure.
Yep.
Uh, also, I, with these new, uh, firearms that we've received, the, they have optics on them, so we're gonna be doing a lot of firearm activity, so we will be ordering even more nine millimeter ammunition, because we have optics on these, and we gotta get used to using the optics versus the iron sights. This isn't something that we're gonna continue to do every year, this is a familiarization, uh, with these new sites, so next year I don't look to spend near as much on nine millimeter ammunition, but due to the new equipment, you gotta train with it. And then, uh, just another kinda heads up is, uh, sometime later this year, maybe, uh, in February, I may approach the board and ask them for, uh, the, uh, permission to spend money for an awards banquet for the police department, so that we can, uh, meet together and give out awards for their accommodations they've achieved throughout last, this last year, twenty twenty-three.
Sounds like a good deal.
And that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you, Bill. Doug?
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, just, there's some pictures if you'd like to see them here. This is a repair on Voorhees Street that was discovered by DES engineer. It was a fault, it had a void, a hole in the sewer line, and they found a manhole that had been buried with eighty-inch block top. So we was able to go over there and dig it up, we made a repair on the line, and the, uh, manhole is now uncovered.
Let me see.
So if anybody'd like to see what?
Heck, yeah.
Looks like the, the, the pipe in there is broken.
So you just put a riser on that manhole?
Yeah, we got the riser on it, and then we put a piece of plastic pipe in to repair. There was a big void in it, but it was, luckily it hadn't collapsed yet, but that is repaired. DS, DES found that with their camera.
That's on board, huh?
Yeah, yeah, right through the address, what did they say, three twelve?
Mm-hmm.
So, so, so you guys could see that, so we did get that repaired. So are there any questions on that, or?
Didn't have to say anything about the sewer video.
You found it with the camera?
Yeah, but, but.
But they've sent me part of it, just online to see this.
Yes.
And everything, so yet, but I believe it's done, I can, I'll reach out to Luke and see.
Well, we, we, we have an issue with the, the project on that street to resurface, and we need to know what sewer needs repaired, an impression we had at some Stormwater Board meeting recently was that we could do spot repairs, not have to dig up the whole street.
Yeah, I believe, talking to Luke, that's what the recommendation's gonna be, is just go in and spot repair, and then go in and line it.
Yeah, do a sip, yeah, secure in place. Uh, yeah, we need that information at Stormwater Board, uh, and then, and then more importantly, we need to hear, because this is the board's gonna prove payment for it, but we need to get that moving. Uh, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking we'd probably try to apply to round two community crossing this year, 'cause I think round one's gonna be Stark Street, round two, we'd probably go after money for that street. Uh, so we'd like to get those repairs done.
Okay.
Maybe this year.
We still talked about adding to Stark though, too, if you can get me a street list.
Yeah.
When I apply for the first time, I mean, just, if it's just milling.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we were gonna do Stark.
We could add.
Sorry, I got off on tangent.
You're, you're right, sorry, so. So everybody give, we're good with the repair and everything?
Yeah.
You guys did a fantastic job on it.
Our guys did that?
Yes.
Yeah, good for them.
So, yeah, they do good work, and we can reach it.
Yeah.
So I did, at the park, we had, uh, put some riprap in around the storm pipe over behind the ball field that was washing out, so that's been taken care of. We've done some tree trimming along the fence, where some storm damage was done, so that fence will need some repairs, and the little pavilion over there, so the park board needs to, I don't know when you meet again, but the insurance company called in and wants to know when those repairs are made, so they can finalize everything, so that's something you need to do. And then, um, the other thing is, I checked with the post at the parking lot. Um, after going over looking at them, there's only really two of them that we can put post in, the way the electric is.
You talking about the bollards?
The post to come up, to protect them.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, we'd have to design something to go offset, and then, um, because the wire runs out in front of them, about eight inches deep, so we couldn't get anything in front of two of them, I believe, so there's actually only two that we could protect. Um, Andy said he could do, you know, make it toward offsets, then have a pipe over, I don't know if he, I mean, I don't know what that would look like a hundred percent.
Probably gonna come up ninety, ninety again.
Yeah, and then go back.
Did, did he give you a quote?
No, because I wasn't sure if you guys would be interested, 'cause I know you guys were worried about appearance, and I'm trying to get that.
Well, I think they would look okay, I mean, I, I've seen similar stuff to that, but I'd, you know, like to see a quote on it.
I'll, I'll go talk to him tomorrow, see if we can't get a picture of actually what he's wanting to do.
How's the, uh, situation with our lights?
Uh, he should have that to end of this week up.
Okay.
So hopefully, if that, if that's, is this week or next week coming out, we were just out there. Um, as soon as we get them, we're just gonna take a week and get them up in the clock.
Are the charging stations up and running?
They're, we've been waiting on them, and she touched, reached out, touched, and they're supposed to be.
They, I, I'm waiting on a call for them to schedule when they can come and actually do all the installs, so we're waiting on them.
Yeah, we're ready, I'm ready, and we've sent all the pictures, um, they sent me back an email saying that everything looked good, and they would contact Brandy, and then I talked to her. She hadn't heard anything, so she reached out, and hopefully.
So, and that was yesterday, so if I don't hear back from them, today's Wednesday, by Friday, I'll reach out to them again and just let them know, hey, we're ready, so let's get them, get them moving.
Just curious, you know, we get, we don't get, what, what's, what's the, uh, plan on that parking lot with snow? Are we going to address snow in that lot, are we gonna touch it at all, go away unless there's a bunch, not touch, I mean, what, what's your thoughts on?
I, I'd say if there's a lot, we could take the skid steer in there and be real careful, you know, what we do. But we can always, you know, put some trucks kinda go in.
Dig it in and out.
So you're gonna load it out, or just?
Yeah, I would say no more area to, to put it, if it's a lot of snow, we'll just have a dump truck sitting there, and it won't take long.
Okay, just curious.
So, but, you know, depending on the amount of snow and everything, too.
We're not getting a lot of snow this winter.
I hope not.
Well, I hope not, you know, alright, me.
So like I said, I'll talk to him on the pole, but yeah, that would be our plan with the snow, and then, um, see, Strawberry Road lift station should be done, insulation should be done by the end of the week. Uh, then he'll have to contact the startup, which that could be a couple of weeks out.
Do we have gas there yet?
Not yet, they, they called in the wrong address, so they gotta recall, call that back.
Um, have we talked anymore about what we could put up over the spray insulation, just to keep it from getting?
I, I, we looked at it, and it's not real thick, so I think we can go in there and either shore out just a little bit, and maybe go, you know, we can probably put metal, I don't know if Bloomingdale still has that plastic.
Yeah, something that, 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 well, you know, there's a mess to be cleaned up, and, and just protect the insulation from getting.
Yeah, I think once it all gets done, everybody's out of the way, we'll go in, take a better look.
Okay.
Maybe do some checking on some material, um, looks pretty, pretty basic, so I think we can go in ourselves.
Yeah.
And, you know, send some guys out, we got a couple of guys that's kinda construction experience, worked construction for quite a while in union, so I can probably send him out and lead the
Okay.
team on getting something, we'll, we'll come up with metal or something, get prices, and then. Metal will look really nice, but I mean, it doesn't really, it's inside gonna be closed, so, but their water line is around, part of the machine is already there.
That room's secured.
Actually, it, it's kind of overhead door and a, a key door, I don't know if there's ever a key, that's something we can change out.
Well, I'm just, you know, it's a two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that, that, uh, probably should.
Yeah, we can put a door on.
I don't know what you guys think, uh.
I agree.
I don't know why anybody would do it, but you sure as enough you don't do it.
Well, exactly, yeah.
At least make an effort there to.
So, um, then tomorrow, Alan and I will be, uh, heading to Plainfield. We're gonna meet Corey Gibbs at nine to look at the street sweeper.
Yeah.
Um, they've got one and ordered another one, so we're gonna go look at it and see it operate, and actually talk to people that run it, and not just the company that's trying to sell it to us. So I'll have some information on that, hopefully, the next board meeting. Um, the, um, decals for the truck that we talked about, I don't know if it was on this one, it's the same thing, one thing different is, is you're wanting a date, they're gonna, they will put the eighteen twenty-four right there.
I like that.
And that would stay, it's gonna be in color.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right now, the price on it is, um, for us to put it on there, which I think we can with the, um, everything is twenty-five dollars, a sticker, so it'll be around five hundred dollars for a little bit.
How big is it?
Fourteen by fourteen is what I went with.
Okay.
I did some measuring on the fire trucks of what they got.
That what they're using?
And, yeah, they got some that's like fourteen to sixteen, and I just thought being at round, we just, you know, go fourteen.
And that's saying it's on their truck?
That, yes, that's what's on their truck.
Get it.
But the, they didn't, they don't have the eighteen twenty-four.
Ah.
But I knew you guys wanted such one there, and that can stay, it doesn't have, you know.
Now, they're gonna want that.
Yeah, so, um, but yeah, twenty-five dollars a truck, roughly counted up, I think it'd be about five hundred dollars, time we do them all.
Well, that'd be nice.
And everything, so if that's something you wanna do, I will, um.
I make a motion to approve.
And everything, we'll have Michelle get them ordered.
For a second?
Okay.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve? Good.
The only other thing I have is, um, I called around and got, you know, told everybody about, uh, being approved for the truck beds, trucks and all that.
Uh-huh.
Obviously, the pickup trucks here will be picked up in the next day or two. The ton truck has not been ordered yet, but I called Clark on the bed, and, uh, we decided not to go with the snow plow. He had a, a, a good idea, I should've called him before and got it, uh, it's, the snow plow is nine thousand, almost ten thousand dollars for the whole outfit.
We already have how many?
Five.
So this would make a six one?
Yeah, so we really don't need a six, but he did, for three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, he can outfit that truck while it's there with all the attachments, and the control inside. So like, one of our plow trucks is Mark's, the cemetery truck, so if it's tied up with dirt and we need it, that plow will fit. We can, these, these piles will fit any of the trucks down there. So for, if you want for three thousand two twenty, he'll go ahead and set it all up, and any of the piles we got, we could use if one truck's broke down or tied up on another job, if Mark's is covered with dirt or something.
Well, well, this would be in the newest truck, and obviously, one of the older trucks gonna get swapped out in probably two or three years, so you gotta have this truck ready to go, so I, I.
I made the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
So we'll have to add it.
Where's that coming from, is that at Clark?
Clark's equipment and properties, appreciate that, I, I, I guess I should've reached out before.
So the mowers, mower, gator, all that stuff is?
Yeah, that, the, the gator should be in the next week or two, the mowers are a month or two out, which is fine. Yeah, that, the, the gator should be in the next week or two, the mowers are a month or two out, which is fine.
Perfect, yeah.
And everything, and then we'll sit down down there with Alan and all that and decide what we're gonna do with some of the old trucks, get a list together, we're gonna do an auction or whatever, and put them up for bids or something.
No reason I'm sitting around, do we have other equipment down there we need to clean out?
Well, we're getting, with us getting ready to move.
Before we move.
Yeah, anytime that we have time, we're, we're kinda going through some things, so we're not gonna take everything at R and C that we, we not used for years, and we'll go through some stuff and see what.
Figure it out.
Yeah, what we're gonna move and not move, so.
Do we have a move date?
Move month, maybe? Junish?
Well, I believe that's, uh, everything I have, let's see if anybody has any questions.
Well, a reoccurring topic, I hate to bring it up, but I, 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 when are we taking the poles out on, on Mark? I keep hearing about it, and it's like, I don't know, I, what's the plan?
Okay, yeah, I mean, we, we, we just need to do, go do it, basically.
Well, I think the problem is, you have to do it a Saturday morning, cause the cars typically.
No, I guess, we, we just need to go set cones out at night, or whenever we can catch it empty, that's the big thing. Brett was kinda hoping we would catch them closing it. And then get in and do it, but if it's, we did get locates for, um, B and T to come in and start the water line again. So, they'll be back in town, so I'm assuming, I know Market Street over here, uh, south of High will have to be closed, that's where they're gonna start.
Well, utilities on that side square, are they all coming in from the behind?
Um, actually, no, there is a water line that comes right down Market Street, right there.
Okay, and they feed off that?
Yeah, they would go in, and then the water meters up front in the basement.
So, I saw that recent meeting, they said they're twelve percent complete on the project, that's nice, uh, eighty-eight percent to go. I, I guess another thought, just speaking, thinking though out here, you know, if we could get an estimate of when they're gonna be on the square, and I'm sure any information we get to the business owners over there, they'd be happy to know that, uh, cause it'll be a big deal for them, and, uh.
The information we get won't be.
Well, now, calm down.
Well, with B and T would be the first one they would be.
Yeah, yeah.
B and T, they're, they're gonna come in, I've did some locates already for them over here, so I'd say, I can call John in the morning and see what he actually plans on being here, and what his plan is, and if it's gonna affect them, that we can.
Well, I think all we can do, just try to keep them informed.
Well, yeah.
Uh, people don't like surprises. Well, all right, thanks, Doug.
Got it, Doug?
Yeah, that's all I got, like I said.
Thank you, are you ready, Brandy?
Okay, so we did have an end of planes, or end of month batch of planes for one eighteen seven twenty-two sixty-five. And then we've got our first of the month here, with some that came in after that three fifty-nine, three thirty-four fifty-eight. I have not gone through them, but do you have any questions?
I got a couple, I, I saw our debt payments, which, you know, and all our other stuff, we always have, uh, two items, one, the, the South Market inspe- inspection, construction inspection, uh, that's an eighty-twenty cost share, isn't that, we have, we, we pay that, we're billing? Okay, that's good. And then the, uh, we had a B and T drainage, uh, eight inch water main and tie over service per quote, whoa. Seems familiar, but I can't remember what it was, for ten thousand seven sixty-nine, what in the heck would be doing there?
Eight inch water main, Doug, does that sound familiar?
Where's that at?
Oh, was that your B and Ts, the water main, the eight inch water main? Yes, okay.
Okay, is outside of, uh, wasn't the project?
No, we, we, we added, it had that, uh, two inch hydrant that was leaking that we were gonna place, had to damn check valves.
Yeah, we've talked about it, yeah, yeah.
You approved that, it, it's all complete and everything.
All right, well, I moved to approve.
Call in favor.
Um, there's some adjustments lingering from the end of the year, November's just twenty-two ninety-seven oh seven. Looks as a leak adjustment, and the house that was disconnected. There's some receipts in here, um, up for failing November's, and then there was a separate batch for December for twenty-eight twelve forty-two. I'm gonna assume these are essentially the same, there's an adjustment refund, still got more leak adjustments.
So, these for a couple of months?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Call in favor.
I know we've had a couple, we've had some toilets, we've had water heaters. Um, I think it's been a little while since I've sent these, but I've got the minutes from the December thirteenth where we had a special meeting, and then our regular council meeting was Monday, December eighteenth. And I've put a note on there for, um, Melissa and Chris on this first one to come around, so those are two meeting minutes for December.
Uh, I'll second.
Oh, we were there or not there? Okay, and then, uh, the next item would be the salary ordinance for twenty-four. Like I said, I sent these out, I had a few responses, um, appreciate those looking that over, making sure the departments, the employees are all looked appropriate, um, updating me if, if I had made a mistake, um, I have gone over these, I'll continue to go with them again before we actually have a pay period. But I do believe that everything's accurate, um, appreciate the work that Park put in on the payroll matrix that we're using to utilize that, make it a little easier, um, the way raises are distributed. Some things were brought up today, Doug and I are gonna look into some more details, um, of some of the, uh, potential licenses or qualifications that people could obtain, we need to be a little more restrictive on those, I think, and then we may have some suggestions brought back to the table at a later date on that. If anybody has any questions, concerns, issues. Second.
Call in favor.
I have a service agreement with the fire department, although our continuous agreement states that shall remain in effect for one year from the date of the agreement, it does automatically renew thereafter, but I, I ju- talked to Josh about it today, and I just feel like it's important that we bring this back to everyone's attention, the first of the year is where our water department, um, we are, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar transfer that we're doing on behalf from the water department to the fire department, that doesn't cover one particular wage, but in a conjunction with all of the fire salaries. So, um, just wanna have that documented, even though, like I said, just as a reminder, if nothing else, that we do take that from the water. This has nothing to do with the fire hydrant money that we put into the fire, to the sinking fund, this is in addition to, but if somebody doesn't mind to make a motion still on that, I appreciate it.
Call in favor.
I will just need Dave's signature twice on that, please. That is for later, uh, the only other thing I, I did wanna speak upon, um, so I was finally able to get that Jefferson Street property down here, which is known as four oh two South Jefferson, um, cleaned up. Column Excavating did a great job of getting that all cleaned up and out of there. I've, since then, um, Nick and I have talked about it. One appraisal I had to get updated, just because it was basically an appraisal with the home, which obviously decreased the value of the appraisal. So, I have two, um, appraisals that we can move forward. I would like to talk to Nick about, we'll do a, um, we'll just do a sealed bid, it'll be similar to what we did on Howard Avenue. And that, um, from those two appraisals, like I said, I'll have Nick review all this information, but it looks like that minimum bid's gonna be seventeen two fifty.
The average of two appraisals, yeah, okay.
So, if you guys are okay with it, then I'll get with Nick, have him review the information. Make sure the numbers are right, and then we'll do an advertisement to take bids on that, I know I've got three people interested that keep asking, so.
What emotion?
Second?
Second.
Call in favor.
Thank you.
So, you, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I just, go ahead.
Somebody go ahead.
Somebody, please. Well, yeah, yeah, uh, well, one thing, we hadn't mentioned yet, that, uh, we received notification right after our last meeting, I believe, we received, uh, the, the Anderson Martin Virginia Street has been reclassified to minor collector, which is a big deal, that opens up the, uh, ability to apply for federal money like we did on Howard and, and South Market, you know, construction dates out there, we would receive it first attempt, it's like twenty twenty-nine, I think, but still you gotta start, and, uh, so that's exciting, um, first step in that process. What else did I bring here? Oh, we had a, you had a pre-bid meeting, uh, on Anderson.
Yes, Anderson Walton Howard.
And we had a couple contractors show up, there were some questions and whatnot, um, now, we opened those, but we're taking bids up to the twenty-sixth of January. Well, I was thinking the other day, now, Case Construction did reach out and say that what we were told from their one office is incorrect, they, they would do work in here, have, have we reached back out to this local case, whoever contacted us? And said, hey, we have a project we're taking bids on right now, would you be interested? And that's just.
Now, the way I understand it, they aren't interested in bidding the project, but they would be a sub under it, right, or am I wrong on that for?
Depending on how big the job was, like.
You talked to someone.
Yeah, like Market Street, for instance, they wouldn't want it the, they wouldn't want all the job, but they would be interested in coming in and blacktopping it. Afterwards, so, um, yeah, I don't know if they would be interested in the sidewalk work and all that.
Well, they could sub it out, I mean, they'd be generally sub out, I, I, it just occurred to me, which at least, you know, ask that they'd be interested, uh, okay, uh.
I mean, they do do sidewalks, so.
Oh, yeah, well, okay.
So, we would like Doug to reach back out to them.
Doug, would you please call the guy and just tell him we're taking them up until the twenty-sixth, if you wanna give him email or tell him to email me, then I will send him those bid docs if he doesn't already have access to them.
Yeah, I'll call him in the morning.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, that's two things I had to couple down.
Well, for sure, or well, I anticipate having at least the two bids on that particular project, and then if Case is interested, maybe a third on that one. We're going to open those bids, I think that, I think the twenty-sixth is actually a Friday, so I'm gonna work with Nick, we're actually, we will open them at four oh one on that Friday.
Four oh one, twenty-sixth is Friday, bid open four P M, yep, yep.
So, I'll go ahead and have Nick to open them, and then they will be then given to D E S for review, and then you, he'll get a recommendation back to you, we can make a decision at the first meeting.
First meeting in February, which is the fifth. So, you mentioned Stark Street, you have it on here, did you have it? No.
I, there's, no, no.
Well, anyway, um, yeah, on Stark Street, you apparently have some other streets to look at, we're just looking at Millen Project, no, no, nothing else. Uh, when is that community crossing grant twenty twenty-four round one due, I mean, that's probably, was due at the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I just need, if we're going to do any more than Stark, then I'm gonna need those streets, so that, then I can.
Well, I'm concerned about cost, I mean, Stark, and we do all of Stark, we have talked about maybe throwing Beetle in, right? Didn't we, somebody?
Yeah, somebody mentioned Beetle.
Yeah, oh, that guy.
Looking at it, it looks pretty good, really, except for along the.
The edge, the edge where the parking is, Beetle's not bad, it's just.
Well, we're looking at taking Stark, say, from the curve, curve there, that's where it starts, correct, and going all the way down to
To the next curve?
To Dewey, next curve, on Dewey White's property, how far are you looking?
Well, I mean, we can, I can't remember when the last time, I thought we did that recently, but it, let me look at it again and see if we need to go all that way.
We did too, maybe.
Yeah, it's been, it's getting a few years on it, so maybe.
Well, next question is, uh, now, we don't have to have an engineer do this, according to what we were told. We can have someone come in and estimate, I think we did, I think we did in-house estimates a couple of times, actually, did on Michigan, I believe it was in-house.
You just have to have a D O T approved.
Okay, yeah.
Contractor come in.
Well, so, so, we have what, milestone, uh, we have, uh, anybody can estimate.
As long as they're D O T approved.
Right.
Maybe case.
Maybe case, I don't know, okay, okay, so, so we need to get that going, we have about what, twenty days maximum?
On any, yeah, any kind of, just milling and pavement, we can, we can do that, so.
So, worst case scenario, if I don't have a list that we want to prove to add, we wanna just apply for Stark.
Yes, yes, I, I think that, you, I'm just concerned, given the project we have going on on Anderson and the cost of that, and our twenty-five percent match plus this other one, eh, we, it's a pretty good stretch of road there. Unless somebody's got a thin stretch somewhere that's really bad, but, and you, you can go around, look, see if you find something.
But he can.
Let's just decide by Friday, for sure, and if there's anything in addition to, I'll send an email, we'll see where we're at with it, and if not, we'll just apply for the Stark.
Okay, um, well.
I did, I didn't have any other updates really, um, that was pressing on any of that stuff, I think it looks like I jumped the gun on Jefferson Street, I had it with my other stuff. So, sorry about that, I printed that letter, if you get to new businesses.
I, I guess I, I, I just wanna express my concerns to the board in general about where we're at in our, our water project, uh, the water main. Uh, I know you reached out to Roger, I believe, and.
I did, and I did not get a response on that.
I believe right after our last meeting, he had a comment back from, he sent out something, he forwarded it to us about, about the conversation within Dodd or I D M, whichever one it was, it didn't look very promising, uh, yeah, I don't know where to go with this, I mean, we, we have, we have a loan, one, we have a loan that we've been approved for, we haven't taken yet. We have Oprah money that we haven't received, it's sitting at the state, they're not gonna hold it forever. I don't know what timeframe is on, on, on taking that either, uh, so I.
On the Oprah funding, we can apply for, um, an extension.
Yes.
But, that being said, we have to have a plan in place.
Yes.
So, I mean, we'll have to have our ducks in a row when we go to do that, and this window's starting to close pretty quick.
Well, that's my concern, David, yeah, I just, how, 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 when's that window gonna close? Uh, you know, given all, this is that email that was sent to twenty nineteenth, it looks like, um, there's just a lot of darn issues here, and I don't know if we're gonna get them resolved or not, apparently, well, I don't know what party said it was okay to encase the water line in concrete, and then now they're saying, well, you know, what if you have a leak? Wouldn't that be hard to fix, I mean, make up your mind what you.
I think their major concerns are fittings and valves.
Well, one was encased in concrete, which made no sense, a valve or something?
And I, I don't think the D O T or I D M is too crazy about that. Um, I don't know what it would cost to put it in a vault, uh, I don't know if Roger's thought about that, um.
Well, I, I guess my question to the board, how should we proceed, we, 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 we need to try to proceed somehow, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know who to call.
Yeah, we need, I mean, Roger.
Well, Cindy, didn't Cindy, was, somebody had a contact somewhere, and we wanted to wait until.
Well, right, we talked about going some other options to try to, to get, uh.
Somebody to answer us at the state level.
Quicker turnaround up at the state level, perhaps, uh, but I don't know if we're at that, that point yet. Uh, but I hate, we don't meet, we don't meet again until fifteenth, and every day's precious on the, with this particular project, we need I, I, I'm looking for, I'm grasping for straws here.
I can, I can try to have a conversation with Cindy tomorrow, just to get an overview of the grant portion of it, it's by the January fifteenth, it'll be four months since we signed a contract with B and T.
Well, that's a good idea, touch base with Cindy and, and find out, okay, what, what's, what's our concerns should be with Oprah. Uh, as far as Fountain Trust, we can take that loan and, and, and have the money in an account here, I suppose. Uh, but we, if this thing doesn't get approved, just around pay it back, I guess, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I'm not sure how long that rate for that loan was, was good, you know, market interest rates change every day, um.
Well, I think we need to reach out to Roger and see if we can get some kind of response out of him, and.
Yeah, uh, well, if need be, we have to have a, a meeting for now, and the next regular meeting, we will, I hope not, but, but we, we said something needs to break here, uh, something needs to be resolved.
I, I didn't get a response on that particular email, um, but I had sent another one about something else to Roger.
Well, we need, uh, uh, the Beetle.
Contract.
Yeah.
Um, and he said he was out with sleep, um, that he would try to get a contract to me by Monday.
Okay, okay.
So, I'm not gonna be surprised if I, I mean, he didn't reply to the other email.
Right, well.
The project.
He probably has no new information, cause I'm sure a lot of people on vacation after the last few weeks at the state level, and, and. Uh, yeah, we need to get contract for this project that we, we bid out, column needs to get going on that.
Is it D O T that's giving us the notice?
Well, it's back and forth, you got D O T, you got I D M, there, there, there is just a mess out there. Uh, they don't want us too close to this, and they don't want us too close to that, and then you come up with a solution, they say, well, we don't like that either.
I, that's what I don't understand, I mean.
I don't know, yeah, it's very frustrating. Now, I'm sure Roger's frustrated, cause it sounds like they had a solution, and they, they kinda backed off on that, what they suggested, I'll shut up, I'm done.
Okay, we're, we caught up on projects, and, I mean, sorry, you're, you're good. Real quick, I do wanna bring up in new business, the CAD, um, system, what you guys think, and well, we need to, I mean, obviously, we need some numbers, and, we need to figure out of what, they're saying there's gonna be two other towns involved in this, plus the county, and then.
If it actually goes through.
What are the towns?
They may get it fixed, may not have to have any affairs, but.
I mean, has anybody s- said anything about, I mean, are they wanting to just have a, like, an even four-way split, or are they talking about the way stuff is dispatched?
It's just something about call volume.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the fair thing, but.
Heard that yet, so.
Okay.
Well, you know, we'll just wait and see what we hear.
Talk to the county about.
Uh, yeah, they've gotta see what this situation, it sounds like, if they're gonna be able to fix it now, and, uh.
It's been a waiting game, so, months now, so.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, we'll keep it, keep it out there until we hear something, one way or the other, but, um, Troy, you got anything? Mike, you got anything?
No, sir.
No.
Yay.
Bruce, you don't have nothing? Okay, fantastic.
People get projects down, down here.
Hey, that's fantastic, I'm not, I'm not complaining. And, uh, any, any public comment?
A question.
Huh?
Question. Well, at our next meeting, the fifteenth, it's gonna be at Elks, right, it's at five o'clock, right?
Yes.
Are there gonna be snacks, are we having some refreshments of some sort, it's kind of a formal event?
We'll be appetizers.
We'll be appetizers.
We're, we're gonna cover this, but go ahead, Doug, so, go ahead, you gotta know, you're, you got the floors, I'm gonna.
I just wanted to know what, what the plan was, uh.
We will basically hold our regular council meeting, and it will be held at five o'clock, um, you know, depending on what's on the agenda, we should be able to wrap that meeting up within the hour, so I did go ahead and set that award ceremony for six P M, so that'll be police and fire, and we'll do the award um, of their badges, and the presentation, we have a couple of guest speakers that will speak as well. Um, so, if you have anything you wanna add, or you'd like to see, or. Um, so if you have anything you wanna add or you'd like to see or to that event, please.
Cocktail.
We'll see.
That's always true.
Saying Alamo?
No, I don't like that hot stuff from saying Alamo, but that's too hot.
But I mean, that's for, Josh and I are still working on coordinating how everything will work, but.
Well, it's exciting, uh.
You know, we anticipate everybody being there and bringing your family with you and.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a real long.
Again, we have to break our vows.
If you want to.
Yeah.
I will not be taking a head count, but if you want to let me know, um, I mean, I I did hear back from, at least, I mean, the fire department, um. They, all five will be in attendance with their families, um, so I had a, you know, have a count from them, but.
Probably all of the police can't be in attendance.
No, I have some work in the middle working on that.
Oh, nice.
I think it's important that everybody be there.
All the time.
Oh, okay.
A good deal, okay.
Hopefully, we have a lot of public there.
Yeah.